Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the City Council to order. The time is 6:08 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Patton.
Smith.
Here.
With six members answering the call, we do have a quorum. Tonight, we have two items that we'd like to address. But before that, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? At this time, we'd like to call up Pastor Fluker to give us a word of prayer as we begin this meeting.
Sir Honorable Mayor, City Council, and Aldermen, let us invoke the presence of the Lord. Eternal God our Father, we thank you for this moment that you've allowed us to come together, to gather the minds, to perform the duties charged to us in this capacity of leadership. Look on our visionary leader, look on the Aldermen, and look on every constituency that is amassed in this room tonight. Be in every word that is spoken, every movement that's made, that you get the glory. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Amen. So we'd like to, at this time, item number four is public comment. We've moved the mic in the middle for a minute, so if anyone would like to step to the mic, please state your concerns.
As everybody might have seen on the news, the UPS strike is, you know, more likely than expected, right? So go out, we're having practicing pickets at UPS, so come out to the local, and support your local Teamster at Jeff Street, 1400 South, 600 West, Jefferson Street tomorrow, 7:45 AM. But support your local Teamster if we go on strike. But just like Teamsters in the private sector, the public sector of workers needs support too. I know they've been closing the City Hall, you know, and the Clerk's Office early if they have a little rain, but I don't know, you know, when the workers get sent home, I don't know if they're getting paid for their scheduled time that they've been working. You know what I mean? And also, you know, I want them to get paid as well, but then also, you know, there's supposed to be service for the, you know, for the residents, you know, and the people of Calumet City, and they're keep on closing early and unexpectedly because of a little rain. Thank you for your time.
We support our workers in Calumet City, and we support their safety. Safety of our residents and our workers come first. Would anyone else like to address public comment? Please step to the mic and state your concerns.
Good evening, all on the DS. Good afternoon to everyone here. I'm a new resident. I like this city. I like what I see. I'd like to urge you all to get to know your public servants, your police department, your fire department. They are here to serve. Yes, I'm biased. I used to work for a police department. But just remember, the people you see with badges over their hearts, there's a beating heart there, and there's a human being there. And if we all communicate, you'd be surprised what you might find. Get to know the officers in your area. Talk to them. They will talk to you. The officers that have talked to me, they didn't know my background, but they were open. We all have to be open. If we all communicate and all coordinate, cooperate, it'll be a great city. Thank you.
Item five on the agenda, for the record, at 6:13, Alderman Patton. It's in the meeting, Madam Clerk. Item five on the agenda, approval of minutes. The minutes were sent to the Alderman. Everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any questions, concerns on the minutes? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes as so stated on the agenda.
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion, or entertain a motion, to deviate from the regular order of business to take up two matters. One is the swearing-in of Officer Newkirk, and also item number nine, A1, on the agenda. Is there a motion to deviate?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in deviation, and at this time, we'd like to call our police chief up and invite all the Aldermen to join us behind the podium for the swearing-in of Officer Newkirk.
Good evening, everyone. When we, this administration started in 2021, we had a joint commitment to not only public safety, but also a joint commitment to bringing in new officers that not only fit the mold of Calumet City, but demonstrated dedication, and also a commitment to Calumet City. To date, we have hired seventeen new police officers. That number has been confirmed by our chief. But it's our goal to make sure that we continue to look at people and officers who want to serve and protect our community, but also want to be a part of the fabric of our community. We've made strides, not only with our residents, with our businesses, but we also want to make sure that we get further connected to people who doubt what we're doing in Calumet City and doubt what our police officers are doing and our public servants. They put their lives on the line every day to protect our community, and we thank them for that. So tonight, we're swearing in a new officer. His family is here, and they're excited, not only about his future in Calumet City, but also about our future together. So I will turn it over to the chief, and then you will hear from Alderman Ramon Williams, who will administer the oath tonight. So I'll turn it back over to our police chief, Kevin Colash. Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Today, we gather here to witness and celebrate a special occasion, the swearing-in ceremony of Officer Tyler Newkirk, the newest addition to the Calumet City Police Department. As we witness this swearing-in, we acknowledge the immense responsibility that comes with the badge that Officer Newkirk will wear. He will be standing before you shortly, taking the oath of office to protect and serve, to uphold the law, and to ensure the safety and well-being of all members of the community. Before we begin, I'd like to thank Mayor Jones and the entire City Council for their continued support of public safety. We share the same vision, which is to continue making Calumet City a safe place to live and to visit. Along with the hard work and dedication of the entire Calumet City Police Department, this vision has become a reality. I'd like to recognize some of the members of the Calumet City Police Department that are in attendance with us here today. Assistant Chief Andre Black, Assistant Chief Keith Kwikowski. In the back, we have Officer Angela Mitchell, who is currently training Officer Newkirk. We have Officer Jordan over here to the right, and we have several of our dispatchers in the back here. We have Dispatcher Garcia, Perry, Wise, and Easton, and I think I forgot one, Jesse too. Sorry about that, Jesse. And also, one of the most important things, one of the more important things here is our Police and Fire Commissioner, Brian Carradine. The Police and Fire Commission has worked extremely hard over the last two years now to get us to the point where we're at. It's been time after time, test after test, and they've put countless hours into getting us to where we're at today, and thank you for that. Now, a little bit about Officer Newkirk. He is from the Chicago area. He's a graduate of Lane College, where he obtained a bachelor's degree in communication. Officer Newkirk went on with his studies at Jackson State University, where he obtained his master's degree, while attending the police academy, I must say. So he was studying at night for both the police academy and for his master's degree. He has a background in education and previously coached football at a local high school. He graduated from the Chicago Police Academy in June of 2023 and is currently in the Calumet City Police Department Field Training Program. Officer Newkirk, this ceremony represents a culmination of rigorous training, countless hours of preparation, and a deep sense of calling. Today, we honor your hard work, determination, and the sacrifices that you have made to reach this point in your career. You will soon learn that law enforcement is a rewarding career, a career in which you'll be challenged, a career in which you will be scrutinized, and a career in which you're held to higher standards. You're tasked with making a difference, making positive impacts on people's lives, and making us proud, making Calumet City proud. Behind every law enforcement professional stands a network of support, including family, friends, loved ones, and fellow officers that have offered guidance, encouragement, and support. I'd like to thank the family and friends of Officer Newkirk, especially his proud parents, which I say, the whole family is proud, but I saw the proud parents, I saw those moments of the few, the times that we've met, and I could see that you are very proud of your son. Thank you for the support that you have provided as Officer Newkirk begins his law enforcement career here in Calumet City. Officer Newkirk, as you take the oath of office today, you must be reminded of the importance of building trust and fostering positive relationships within the community. Law enforcement is not just about enforcing the law, it's about being a guardian, a role model, and a source of reassurance for those we serve. It is through compassion, empathy, and understanding that we can bridge the gap between law enforcement and the community, ensuring mutual respect, cooperation, and a safer environment for all. I congratulate you for being selected to be one of Calumet City's finest, and I welcome you into your extended police family, the Calumet City Police Department. We're here to support you in your journey and wish you the best of luck. May your journey be filled with purpose, fulfillment, and the knowledge that you are making a profound difference in the lives of the people that we serve. Can you please step forward? And Alderman Williams is going to administer the oath of office to you.
Raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Tyler Newkirk.
Tyler Newkirk.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Calumet City.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Calumet City.
The rules and regulations of the city of Calumet City Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Calumet City Police Department.
And I will faithfully discharge the office of police officer.
And I will faithfully discharge the officer of police officer.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the very best of my ability.
And to the very best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right, everyone. Item nine, A1, is the labor agreement between the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council for our telecommunicators, supervisors, and also for our sports stat, or communicate, telecommunicators. So before we bring up Tamara, this is an item that we've discussed. This is an item that's important with our telecommunicators. Is there a motion to approve item nine, A1?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderwoman Wilson, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, council. At this time, I'd like to invite up Tamara Cummings to not only talk about this, but also if you can introduce and bring up the new telecommunicators as well.
Oh, sure. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tamara Cummings. I am general counsel for the Illinois FOP Labor Council, which is the law enforcement unit that represents not only the police officers in this department. I'm very happy to see we have another very talented, promising young man added to the department, but also the telecommunicators. I'm here for them this evening, and several of them have taken time out of their schedules to come here because it's such an important matter to them. Do you want to come on up, say hello? They're going to kill me. They asked me to speak on their behalf to thank you, Mr. Mayor, the council, the administration, your attorneys that worked with me on this. They're very appreciative. It's a good deal, it's a fair deal, it's a reasonable deal, and it represents a very nice improvement in benefits, which they so well deserve. Sometimes people overlook the important role that telecommunicators play in public safety. I'm sure if you asked any of the officers here how much they need and rely on them. So thank you all, and thank you for your support. Want to introduce yourselves?
Good evening. Jacquet C. Valdez. Just want to thank you guys for your support, for everything that you guys are doing for us, helping us get through with this contract together, telecommunicators and City Council. So thank you guys very much for everything, and for Tamara for helping out with everything as well.
Juliana Wise. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Olivia Perry. I'm telecommunicating in training. Thank you guys for having us today, and thank you, Tamara.
I am Robin Garcia. Thank you guys again for everything. Thank you, Tamara.
Hi, Richard Easton. Thank you.
Thank you guys for all your service, and thank you guys for the work you do as telecommunicators. We've been up there, and we've added a lot of technology, so chief, thank you for the technology and working with the telecommunicators as well. This represents labor peace in Calumet City thanks to this City Council. We've settled the contracts not only for our firefighters, but also today for our telecommunicators. We also settled the contracts a month ago for our clerks. So now, we are in a position to not only support the hard-working men and women of our departments, but just thank them for their service at Calumet City. So chief, you got anything else, or you finished?
No, that's it. Thank you, thank you all for everything, and thank everybody in the back here for the hard work that you do. I didn't mention it, but the two newest, our two recent hires are Juliana Wise and Olivia Perry, just started with us two months ago now, so two months ago up in dispatch. So welcome aboard, and you guys, your first, your first meeting that you're at here. Thank you for what you guys do. Thanks.
All right. You guys do not have to stay for the meeting. I know it's an exciting meeting, but you do not have to stay for the meeting. If you want to leave, you can leave, and we'll continue on with the rest of the, rest of the business. Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business at 6:31 PM?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
We are back in the regular order of business at 6:31 PM. Returning back to the agenda, we are on item six, reports of standing committees. Finance, Alderman Gardner.
Yes, Mayor, I would just like to briefly bring to the attention of the council that we are going to be having budget meetings starting on the 17th of July. I don't have the rest of the dates, as the mayor has not sent them out yet. So just be mindful of July the 17th. Keep that date in mind. Keep it open. That's all I got.
Thank you, Alderman Gardner. Public safety, Alderman Williams.
No report at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Public utilities, Alderman Patton.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick from the Public Utilities Committee, so obviously, I'm sure, like most of you, I received a number of calls over the past week, week and a half with the weather that we've been having, and the rain, and yards flooding and things like that. I just want to remind the residents that, you know, when our sewer system gets the kind of unprecedented rain that we've had in the last week, week plus, the streets are going to flood. You know, we've got an old sewer system, there's a lot of rain that came down in a very short amount of time. Please, you know, just be patient, and if the water's in the streets, it's not in your basement. So just keep that in mind. I know it's frustrating, but, you know, we'd rather have flooded streets than flooded basements, and, you know, when that kind of rain comes down, you know, once a year, once every couple of years, it's, you know, it's just something we've got to deal with. So just please keep that in mind and be patient. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Ordinance resolution, Alderman Tillman.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, Welfare, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. Health, Education, and Welfare held a meeting on June 28th at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. Thank you to the guests that attended, Calumet City, Lansing, Illinois Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity, Urban Mail Network, Tomorrow's True Foundation, Omega Psi V Fraternity Incorporated Mu Psi Chapter. We thank you for coming to help us plan out the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee's Back to School event, which will be held on Sunday, August 13th. The committee agreed by a majority vote and with input from our partners and organizations to change the date to the Back to School event to Saturday, from Saturday, August 12th to Sunday, August 13th. One of the reasons being that August 12th is Bud Billiken. The event will be held at Calumet Memorial Park, 612 Wentworth Avenue from Newt, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We aim with a bold goal to serve 5,000 students this year. Last year, we were able to service 1,100. The fair will be open to all residents in Calumet City, so you don't have to live in a particular ward. You can come, because Health, Education, and Welfare does assist with everybody. If you would like to help and donate, we do have a link on our website or on my website, AlderwomanWilson.com. Unfortunately, we have been denied twice by this administration for any donations. So we are asking the community to assist our children. We can party in the park, we can listen to music in the park, we can have various events, but when it comes to our kids, it is up to this community to take care of our youth and our families. So please visit AlderwomanWilson.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Navarrete, I think you have a guest you have to introduce in your Public Works Committee as well.
Yeah, so, you want to say hello? This is my daughter, Josefina. I've been out of town on an emergency job here on the, on the East Coast, so she wanted to make sure I came. I came straight from the airport here, and she wants to make sure I don't stop at any taverns on the way home after the meeting, so. Say hello.
Hello.
Thank you, Mayor. We skipped over Alderman Smith, but I'm sure we'll go back to him. I just want to tell Public Works, again, thank you for the work you did on July 5th. I did have some scares in some areas that were flooding with water, and some streets similar to we did all around town, and a lot of municipalities had. They did come out, started clearing manholes for us, and was able to see some of that water subside. For residents out there, a lot of the times if you see pooling water in the streets, a lot of it is just debris, leaves, sticks maybe covering up the manholes. If you can get to the manhole, try to cover, uncover that debris, a lot of the time, that water will subside from the street, and it helps out. So a lot of time, it's just a blocked manhole. So we asked residents if they could help out, if they do see, you know, standing water in the streets, try to find that manhole, uncover it. Again, Public Works did have all hands on deck to, again, all around the city trying to address areas of pooling water, so they did the best they could, and I want to just commend them for the work they did. But that's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Permits and licensing, Alderman Smith.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. City Council reports, we'll start on this side. Alderman Smith, City Council reports.
Yes, just want to inform the residents that the 7th Ward Monthly Town Hall will be held at DA's Banquet Hall this Saturday, 15th, from 10:00 AM to noon, so please be sure to come on and ask me, accompany me with your questions. Be glad to answer as many of them as I can, and I will be serving refreshments, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Patton, 6th Ward.
Nothing specific.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner.
Yes, real quick, Mayor, thank you. I would like to yield some of my time to the family, the Heel family in the 5th Ward in the loss of their four-month-old grandson, Marshawn Nazir Heel. Can we just have a moment of silence? Thank you. My thoughts and prayers are with the family. Also, in other news, I would like the 5th Ward residents to continue to reach out to my office, 708-891-8195, in reference to any concerns that you may have. Also, I would like to thank the Public Works crews that responded to street flooding that assisted residents in some of those areas that received large amounts of water, down tree limbs, branches, all kind of debris removal from the streets during that episode that we had. That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. 4th Ward, Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. First, God has made all things possible. I just want to let the residents know that the 4th Ward outdoor meetings will be held next week, beginning Wednesday, the 19th, at Luella and Wilson at 6:30. Friday, the 21st, at 6:30 at Oglesby and Stewart, and then on Saturday, the 22nd, at 158th and Paxton in the Sandridge apartment parking lot. So that's next Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. Also, next Saturday, we will be giving away, in partnership with the mayor and Rucker and Rucker, we will be giving away free suits at Rucker's Lounge at 1807 Sibley Boulevard. So if anyone is in need of a suit, please feel free to stop by, and hopefully they have your size. All right? Supposed to be a thousand suits there, so we'll see. We'll see. All right. Lastly, I just want to commend the, all of the city services for their continued and expeditious response to all of the residents and citizens of the 4th Ward and Calumet City abroad. You are, you all are very responsive to the needs of the community, and I just want to commend you all from Public Works, police, fire, clerk's office, everybody that plays a part in making us all look good on the City Council, so thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. 3rd Ward, Alderman Tillman.
First of all, I second what Alderman Williams just said about city services, and especially want to give a thank you to Public Works for the rapid responses that they've been doing around the 3rd Ward. I want to remind the residents of the 3rd and 4th Ward Back to School picnic, which is August 12th at noon at Downey Park. Again, a Back to School picnic, August 12th starts at noon. It'll be held at Downey Park 300 Jeffrey. Also, the 3rd Ward Monthly Town Hall meeting will be August 7th at noon, I'm sorry, August 7th at 6:30 PM at Downey Park. Do not show up at noon. It's Monday, August 7th, 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Wilson, 2nd Ward.
Thank you. The block meetings, building leaders on our corners, meetings have been held every month or every Monday so far this month, and we will continue every Monday of the 1st of July from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Higher Ground Community Church located at 415 Saginaw, right here in Calumet City. We are on phase one, which is our neighborhood walk. Thank you to the residents that continuously come out to the meeting and engage and bring new residents who are moving into our ward. We have an expectation of excellence in the 2nd Ward, and our meetings are nothing short of excellent. On, a new list will open on Monday. This will be our lights list, so please text your name and address to be added to the list for lights if you have an existing light that's dim. Our Public Works works to remedy that for us. While I was born around... Works works to remedy that for us. While I was going around the ward today, I noticed that the wooden light in the alley on the 400 block of Hoxie, right behind Walgreens, it cracked. One more poor weather situation and it's gonna come tumbling down. So, that is something that I will send in to have addressed immediately. But, if you have a concern regarding your light, please send your name and address and a contact number so we can come out and review that. July 14th, that's this Friday afternoon with the Alderwoman, we have limited tickets available. This free event will be held outside at Commissioners Park from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. We will have a indoor location should it rain, but we are thanking God in advance for holding on to that rain. Also, later that evening, during Township Days in the park will be held at Calumet Memorial Park from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. On Friday, we were going to have the winners announced for the best yard or best lawn in the 2nd Ward. We have extended that contest due to the rain and some people being upset that it messed up their flowers, so we wanna give them a chance to fix those up and re-enter the contest. Around town, please visit alderwomanwilson.com. Anything that's happening in Calumet City that you should know about, I do list it on Alderwoman Wilson under the Around Town tab. Right now, if you have children, there are free programs going on for ages 5 and 6. Football, they can register for free, you pay for the uniform. Right now, the first 100 cheerleaders who would like to register for the Calumet City Chargers Youth Cheer and Football Program can do so for free. Visit calumetcitychargers.com. Thank you to our Public Works and our inspectional services as well as Police and Fire. I've been listening and been around town, and you've been busy, but you've been professional, courteous, and on point. Jericho, we in a race to see who wakes up earliest in the morning. You are very attentive to the residents, I appreciate that. Should you need me, feel free to call me, 708-586-4990. Again, I am reminding everyone that Sunday, August 13th, is the Health, Education, and Welfare's Back-to-School Resource Fair. So, it's more than just pencils, pens, and Back-to-School Supplies. We're gonna have some resources and people out there to assist families that need assistance. Thank you to Impact Church for the donation of the gang truck. Thank you for businesses for pulling in when this administration would not assist. So, thank you so much again. Any amount helps. We have a bold goal of raising $7,500. Thank you again.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, as I stated earlier, I had an emergency travel I had to do earlier in the week, and unfortunately, had to reschedule the town hall that was supposed to be scheduled for Wednesday. The residents that I did email flyers to, I was able to reach out to them, but I was told by the VFW that a handful of residents did show up, so I apologize to those residents. The meeting will be rescheduled for two weeks in July 26th, again, at the VFW at 6:00 PM. So, July 26th at the VFW, that's 664 Hersch Avenue. And again, my apologies for those residents for my absence. That's all I had this evening. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Under the Mayor's report, just wanna alert the residents, I know several of the Aldermen mentioned the water situation with the rain that we received. I wanna also thank Public Works. We had several downed trees that fell on cars that not only our first responders, our Police and Fire responded to, but Public Works was out there as well. So, thank you for the assistance you gave to the residents who had the tree fall on their cars, and also the residents who called Public Works to get assistance. They've all sent in letters commending Public Works, and we will have it on the next agenda. Governor Pritzker did issue a disaster proclamation. We were working with the governor to correct the proclamation because it ends on July 4th, and we all know that the rain extended on July 5th. So, the governor did issue a disaster proclamation which will allow residents, state and federal assistance. Hopefully, the governor will correct that and extend that. The proclamation includes Calumet City of Cook County, but we also wanna make sure that it extends to the date that happened on July 5th. We wanna report that we rescheduled Big Rob McGee's Day and also the Jazz on the Grass, which will be a special day that will happen next Wednesday at the Calumet City Library. It will start at 5:00 PM. There'll be the grand opening of the Library Cafe. If you have not seen the grand opening of the cafe, you're gonna be amazed. Right now, the library is not only using the cafe for the Butterfly Effect, which has approximately 56 young women in the program, but also the Trio Program. This is all part of the grant funding that we've gotten from the state, which is assisting the city of Calumet City to have these programs, and is not directly hurting our budget, but it's enhancing the services that we're giving to young women and young men at the library. So, again, next Wednesday, 5:00 PM, we're gonna start the dedication, and then Jazz on the Grass will be starting immediately after that at 5:30. I am gonna ask my colleagues to support, we had to do the rain cancel, the fireworks show for July 4th, so we're looking to do it on Labor Day. So, we are still planning to get that together. Sunday of Labor Day. Looking to do that, so we'll make sure that all the Aldermen are involved so we can have a celebration and support our men and women of labor as well on Labor Day. So, look forward to more information on that. We're also gonna start the citywide town hall meetings. We'll work with the Aldermen to not only schedule those, but we also make sure that we work with our Police Department, who's been doing a fabulous job with contacting our residents. If you haven't seen our officers on the bikes, or if you haven't seen them go to a business, they're out there not only contacting residents, but also out there working with our business community, and we wanna make sure they keep that up. Last thing, on July 29th, we're scheduling, was it July 29th or August 29th, the lead line?
That's right, that's right, Mayor. To date, of our expected, hope to have 300-plus residents signed up for our lead service line replacement program, mainly in the 6th Ward. We now have reached 50, but we know that we need more. So, what we're hoping to do at the end of August, but right after school starts, is have a public event at the Training Center where we're gonna be able to promote this program, inform people on why it's important to remove the lead service line, your water line that goes into your house that you use to drink water with and bathe with, and how easy it is to be able to access this program and get the benefits that the city is providing. So, we'll have that at the end of August, Mayor.
Thank you, and we'll make sure that all the Aldermen get the notification, but I know all of you guys have requested that, so we're gonna do it August 29th. So, we are all working together to make sure residents realize that this is a program that they have to pay nothing for, but it's a program brought on by this City Council to make sure we remove lead from the houses. That's the end of my report, so if we can move on to Item 8 on the agenda, which is informational items to be accepted and placed on file. We have three items. Are there any questions? No Treasurer Tarker, we have the TIFF report. Did you have any comments on Items 8A? Mr. Treasurer?
If anybody would like to view those reports for the Tax, Engineering, and Financing Districts, this is a year, this is an annual submission that we make, feel free to stop by the officer or request them, we'd be happy to send them out to you.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Is there a motion, like to entertain a motion to accept and place on file Items 8A through C?
So moves.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Item 9, Item 9, is 9, is new business. 9A, 1 through 14, actually 2, 2 through 14. We've already taken up Item 1. Are there any questions regarding Items 9, 2 through 14?
Yes. I'll go first, I guess. As it relates to Items 5 and 6, I haven't seen it worded like this. Is there an intention to add these items to the handicap ordinance at a later meeting?
Can you amend?
Is this a new way of doing it?
Can you amend those motions to include, direct the city attorney to draft the ordinance first? Because that's the first step? Think it's just, is it worded wrong, Alderman? So, if you can, yeah, just amended, Alderman, to direct the city attorney to draft the ordinance for those?
I'd like to make a motion to amend Items 5 and 6 to read that it should direct the city attorney to amend the handicap ordinance to add 728 Green Bay Avenue and 596 Muskegon Avenue to the handicap ordinance.
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Wilson. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll on that?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Smith?
And Alderman Gardner?
Yes, Item Number 4, it reads, "Motion to Direct Public Works to Install a Two-Way Directional Arrow Sign at Highland Street and Detroit Street Intersections with Wentworth." It should be to create a four-way stop at the intersection of, these are stop signs. So, I'm not sure where the directional arrow came.
Alderman, is it, can you make a motion to amend that, to reflect?
Or do somebody, yes, yes. Yep, to be made stop signs, not directional arrow. No, at the intersection of, oh, you know what? I'm thinking about another motion. I haven't even sent it yet. For this regard, sorry about that.
So, this one is okay?
Rainfall.
Number 4 is okay. And Alderman, there was a, there was an email that was sent for a report on one of your, the motions, and I think Public Works just took care of the four-way on one of them, and the report was contained as well on here. Okay. So, is there a motion to approve Items 9A?
I'm sorry. Item Number 7 and 8, I was just looking for clarity on, "Motion to Direct the Engineers to Research and Remediate the Sinking Alley on the 400 block of Hoxie Behind Buddy Bear Car Wash." I wasn't sure what was meant by the scope of work of research and remediate. Has any, I associate remediation with excavating soils.
It was a request of Alderwoman Wilson?
Yes, the alley is sinking, and there has been conversation with the owner. Nothing has been done, though. And so, there's another one for remediation because we already have that quote. It was sent as part of an attachment when, well, we have what the engineer found to be the problem, but nothing has been done yet to remediate that on Herbert Braklaw. So, those two issues, however you seem fit, I just need it to happen.
So, that's the only issue I would have, is just what the cost would be to address the issues that are on the 400 block of Hoxie and 1,100 block of Herbert Braklaw, Items 7 and 8. Do we have a cost associated with what it would take to perform that work?
No, we haven't, because we haven't investigated yet. But, we would, as part of the investigation, then we'll have a recommendation that we'll give to the city, to the mayor, to the council, and to the Public Works about what can be done, if anything, to be able to correct that. As we all know, our alleys are in, you know, different shape. They're all aggregate, for the most part, and that the mayor is working hard to try to get more money in so we can have that paving. But, we will try to find a way to remedy the problem.
Alderman Navarrete, if you wanna amend the motion to include not to exceed a certain amount and direct the city engineers?
Yeah, I think that's where I was going with it. Usually, I guess the process would be, Farnsworth would give us not to exceed a amount to investigate the alley, come up with recommendations, and then from there, we'd continue the process.
We're not, we're not spending any money other than just giving a cert, we'll go out, take a look, and then we'll give a recommendation.
Do you have a not to exceed price now, or do you, we have to get that information?
No, I don't. But, that's the cheapest part of it. Remedying it is the big cost.
Right, that's gonna be the cost, no, absolutely. And I only say it because I also have, as you're aware of, an alley in the ward behind our old dry cleaner that we'd have to have that same investigation. So, yeah, I mean, I guess I would make a motion to amend, are 7 and 8 the same alley? Or are they?
No, they're two different locations.
To amend 7, to direct the engineers to provide a not to exceed cost to address issues of the sinking alley on the 400 block of Hoxie behind Buddy Bear Car Wash?
Motion made by Alderman Navarrete, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tillman, to amend Items 7 and 8, not to exceed, and also direct the city engineer to report back to the City Council to, before any items are spent. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll on that amended motion?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton? Smith?
So, I think the motion would be made, the same motion for Item 8?
He just did it all in one.
7 and 8, oh, okay. And then, Item Number 13 and 14, there's a July 1st date. Is that supposed to be August 1st, or is that just an old, there's a request for street closures for July 1st on Item 13?
I believe it's August 1st, Alderman.
So, motion to also amend Item 13 and 14 to reflect August 1st? Is there a second?
I don't know who this is.
Motion made by Alderman Navarrete to amend Items 13 and 14, second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, can you call a roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton? Smith?
So, for the record, new business items 2 through 14, as amended, Number 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 13, and 14. Madam Clerk, on those amended motions, can you call the roll to approve Items 9A, 2 through 14 as amended?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton? Smith?
Thank you, everyone. Building permits, as presented on the agenda, would the council like to take building permits and new garage construction together?
Yes.
Like, are there any questions regarding building permits on the agenda or new garage construction? If not, can someone make a motion to approve the new fence construction and new garage construction as so presented on the agenda?
Some, second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderwoman Wilson. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton? Smith?
Thank you, Council. Item C of Resolutions and Ordinances, are there any questions regarding the resolutions and ordinances?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would like to make a motion to remove Item Number 3 until we have further discussion with South suburban land bank.
Thank you, Alderman. Is there a second?
Second.
Table, Item 3 on the agenda. Motion made by Alderman Gardner, seconded by Alderman Navarrete?
Tillman.
Tillman, second motion. Madam Clerk, can you call a roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton? Smith?
Thank you, Council. So, Alderman Tillman, is there a motion to approve Resolutions and Ordinances 1, 2, 4, and 5?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman to approve Items 1, 2, 4, and 5. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams?
May we have discussion, please?
Yes.
For Items 1 and 2, I might have missed, do we have a quick background on those two?
This was, we had a issue with the person who owned a building, who was not being charged refuse. Our policy was outdated, so it didn't allow us to give him, Cleo, you want to come up and explain it? I don't know how many?
He had commercial property, this one is going with five units, and the city services up to four units, so he was paying for his own service simultaneously being built, so that's what these were to address.
Got you, okay. That was Item 1, and Item 2?
He just walked up here for nothing. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Cleo.
Maybe, maybe Cleo has Item 2, Cleo, maybe. Item 2? Item 2?
Good job, Cleo.
Item 2 with the refunds?
Dominic.
That was for the actual authorization of the refund for that jump.
Oh, so it's the same, they're tied together?
One led to the first, and then the second was to remediate the issue.
Got you, okay. Thank you for the explanation. That's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. So, we got a first and a second, and we're in roll call. Madam Clerk?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. D, Financial Matters, Alderman Gardner, Items 9 is a duplicate, so we can remove Item 9 per our fire chief. Are there any questions on Items D, Financial Matters, 1 through, she's got one hand, so, excuse me, 30?
I had a question.
Yes, Alderman.
When the bill breakdown lists that you are authorizing a payment to the Campbell Block Club of $2,000 for a party, will the other block clubs that are in Kuyumet City be able to send a request for $2,000?
They can send a request, I mean, it's, we'll do it on a case-by-case basis, so if they want it, they can send a request in.
Okay. I also wanted to know, what account is that coming from? Your personal, mayoral, line item?
Whatever account is on there, Alderman.
I don't recall, because it's not in front of me. The reason I'm asking is because I've asked, and this council was part of me asking two different times for $2,500 for the students in Kuyumet City.
Alderman, that's a separate issue.
And that seems to be a problem. We're on financial items, and that was a financial item, it never made it to the actual agenda. So, I do have a question, how we're giving one block club, especially in my ward, money, when I have 13 block clubs in the 2nd ward?
Everyone can apply, Alderman. If they want to apply, we'll do them on a case-by-case basis. Alderman Gardner, is there a motion to approve Financial Matters? Is there a second? Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Present.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Alright, unfinished business, Alderman Navarrete?
Nothing this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Wilson, unfinished business?
Yes, again, should you need me, please feel free to contact me, 708-586-4990, and I'll leave you with this, anything you do for personal gain that harms one person, that cost is too much, please do better. We are a city that should be working on behalf of our residents and not against the majority. Again, 708-586-4990.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Tillman?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gardner, unfinished business?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, Alderman. Alright, there being, we don't have executive session tonight, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:07 PM?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Patton. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 7:07 PM.